Our final item under administration is an information item. It is the safety topic of the month, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, presented by Director of Secondary Leadership, Amy Semensky; Director of Elementary School Leadership, Teri Zubler; and Director of Safety, John Gates.
Good evening, Vice President Richardson, Dr. Lang, and members of the board. We are pleased to present an overview of our Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Systems. Each District 6 school uses PBIS, as it's fondly known, as a guide for their positive learning environment. PBIS is not a CAN program, rather it's a set of principles or a framework that each school staff uses to shape its school environment for its students and its staff. Tonight, Mr. Zubler and I, with the help of two of our administrators, will share how PBIS is used in the school. Mr. Zubler and I will be sharing the principles and give you a taste of the diversity of how our schools implement the PBIS programs. So you might ask, what is PBIS? It is actually a very strong and comprehensive system for supporting all students and staff to create positive learning environments. You can see on this graphic how evidence-based practices come together with data to create systems. And these are systems that support staff behavior, help our staff be more effective in dealing with classroom and school-wide management issues, systems that support student behavior, systems that support social competence and academic achievement, and systems that support decision-making. In addition, our PBIS system connects to many of our other systems, such as our teacher and our principal evaluation systems, and our unified improvement planning. We use the data from our PBIS systems around those, and there are standards for the teacher and principal evaluation that speak to a positive learning climate. PBIS helps us establish a climate in which appropriate behavior is the norm. It's what's taught, reinforced, and expected. Inside of our PBIS systems, teachers, administrators, and all staff work together to implement positive behavior systems. And how do they do this? Through the application of seven critical components that are tailored to the needs of their schools. PBIS has several outcomes, what you see as the big circle going around this, and those include the integration of academics and behavior, the improvement of school and classroom climates, the reduction of reactive management, the maximization of academic achievement, and the improvement of supports for students that have behavior issues. Another piece that is included in the PBIS systems that you'll see is the layers of different environments. So there are school-wide parts of the PBIS system, there are classroom initiatives, and there are supports for the individual students. All environments are included, including our non-classroom settings such as playground, before or after school, and home and families are involved with PBIS also. PBIS was developed by Dr. George Segai and Dr. Rob Horner about 15 years ago in response to discipline systems that emphasized punishment, were very reactive, and that showed very little effect on individual student behavior, and very little effect on overall building climate. So critical components include a leadership that defines, implements, and evaluates the behavior system. This can include staff, administrators, parents, and students. Each school also has a set of positive expectations and behaviors. I know as you've been out to your school visits, you see a lot of large posters that display those in the schools. There are procedures for teaching school-wide and classroom-wide expected behaviors, and there are some tools that go along with that that Mr. Zubler will speak about. There is a continuum for encouraging expected behavior, and our principals are going to be speaking to that. But that can include everything from a simple praise. PBIS recommends that students receive three praise for each correction, and so that's a goal our staff works on. It can also include recognition, rewards, and tokens. There is also a continuum of procedures for discouraging rule violations. This can include reteaching of the positive behaviors, conferences, loss of privileges, and consequences. Each school has defined what we call, or PBIS calls, the major and minor infractions. So a minor infraction might be not doing your homework or being late to class. A major infraction usually involves someone more than a classroom teacher and consequences, and that might be a fight or extreme defiance with a classroom teacher. Our schools use our discipline matrix, which you have looked at before in our handbooks, to guide them, and they also use Infinite Campus to record and keep track of all the discipline referrals. This helps them monitor the outcomes and guide professional learning for the staff. The data that's in IC or Infinite Campus goes to speak to number six on this list, the procedures for ongoing database monitoring and evaluation. And so in Infinite Campus, our schools are able to collect and report out data regarding the student, the location, the time, the type of infraction. We actually record two levels of the infraction so that we can be really specific, because detrimental behavior is this big umbrella, and we have that broke down so that we can really problem-solve around that. And also the referring staff member, and that helps our staff work with individuals who may be struggling with classroom management. It also helps them identify a time of day or a location in the school. Part of the data that we monitor is also our evaluation. So in your packet for tonight, you have a sample of the benchmarks of quality. This is an assessment developed by PBIS. It was originally developed for some Florida schools, which we use, that each of our school teams report out each spring. And we monitor that data, we monitor the discipline data, and we also visit the schools and monitor how things are going. Number seven is the multi-tiered interventions, and Teri's going to go into a lot of details on those, so I will let him continue on.
So good evening, and thank you. As Amy said earlier, the purpose of PBIS is to establish a climate in which appropriate behavior becomes the norm. And because PBIS is a framework, it's not a scripted program, and it's not a set of rules that we follow. Instead, it's an easily adaptable program that schools can use, each school in our district can use to meet its own particular needs. A school-wide discipline plan might include some of the things that Amy mentioned earlier, but there would be a teaching matrix in there, and we have an example of a teaching matrix on the screen in front of you from one of our elementary schools. This particular matrix is used at Meeker, but all of our schools have a teaching matrix similar to this. In this matrix, the school is using a school-wide acronym. You can see over there on the left-hand side the word PAWS. And that acronym is used in order to help the children to understand or to remember the social skill that's being taught. The school also has identified the context. Up on the top, you can see those are the natural environments where that skill universally would be taught to the children. So context might be in the classroom, could be in an assembly, could be, and these would be expected behaviors. So then staff would spend time teaching the type of practice, the type of behavior that they would want the children to model. This is an example of universal school-wide practices of behavior, and these practices are meant for all children. They're not just taught one time. We find that 80% or more of our students will follow these universal practices. These behavior practices are frequently reviewed by the teachers, and they're often reviewed in those areas where those problems might occur. So instead of having a rule on the wall that says there is no bullying, we would teach respectful behavior in the hallway, and you know, what does respectful behavior look like in the hallway to help children to understand that? So you probably have seen this pyramid before, and tonight I want you to think of it in terms of tiers of support. The goal of Tier One is, and that's this big bottom green tier, is to promote positive skill development and prevent problems from emerging, allow for students to grow, and to reduce the need for more support. But even with effective Tier One support, some students will need targeted Tier Two intervention and support. The layers increase in intensity. So the goal of Tier Two is to supplement the Tier One, the universal support, and it's also to continue to improve outcomes. But even with Tier One and Tier Two supports in place that are designed and they're well-delivered, there are still a few students who may need more intensive support, and that's what we do with Tier Three. The goal of intensive Tier Three support is to enhance the existing support and to improve individual academic and behavior outcomes. An example of Tier Three might be a functional behavior assessment is done on a student that's having all kinds of problems, and then maybe setting up a behavior contract to help the student to be more successful in the school setting. This slide shows, you might think of this as an individual student, and if you look at the bottom, in all the green areas, this is a student that's really having success in lots of different areas, lots of different supports. So we don't, we try and we help our schools to understand that we don't want to label a behavior. We don't want to say, that student is a Tier Three student, he's a red zone student, you know? Because that label tends to stick with our students. Instead, we try to label the support that the student is getting, and the type of support that the student may need to be successful. So you might think of this as, you know, here's a student, does very well with peer interactions, attendance is good, cooperative when he plays with others or she plays with others, adult relationships are good, really can understand themselves, but has a little bit of difficulty with problem-solving and leads to anger-management issues. And so a support that a school might put in place might be, that student may be in a problem-solving group that meets at lunchtime and talks about strategies to control their anger. So I think if we learn to look at the support and not label the students, we feel that we get more of a desired effect. This approach helps us to honor and respect each child and support children in the areas that they need development. So joining us tonight, as Amy said earlier, we have two of our one principal and one assistant principal. I'd like to ask John Kleiber, an assistant principal at Ann K. Hyman Elementary, to share some of the ways that PBIS is working at his school.
Well, good evening. Thanks for allowing me to come and speak with you and highlight Ann K. Hyman Elementary School and the work we're doing with PBIS. I hope to make some connections with the bullet lists and the number one through seven that you've been looking at and seeing, and share with you kind of what's in front of you in these pictures. And what I want to highlight tonight, Amy talked about data and talked about how we use it and how we develop that into this idea of PBIS. And what you're looking at is a response to data. It's a response to student and adult Gallup poll data. It's a response to the benchmarks of quality that she discussed, and it's a response to what we see and hear from adults and students in our building. And so what you see on the right is a teacher during one of our morning launches. And morning launch was a response to a need for students to have hope, a need for students to have connection to our school, a need for our students to know that there's a day beyond tomorrow, that there's a day beyond 12th grade, that Huskies, that's who we are, that Huskies don't give up, that Huskies stand together and are united and connected as a school. What I have here as well on the left is another piece of that. We had a school group get together and do a book study on what students need if they lack hope and need to see beyond tomorrow. And we do goal-setting, and I'm actually kind of wearing a few of the different things that we do and have, and one of them is dog tags that students set goals and meet them, and they come up against a challenge, and we tell them, you can do this, and we give them the feedback they need to do it, and we recognize their achievements and efforts when they do, so that students know that there's a way to get past a struggle and a way to get past a goal that's been set, and that they'll be recognized when they achieve those goals. And so those are some of those different pieces that you see here. Thank you. The other piece of it is, and this comes from, again, all those different data pieces, our recognition for students and staff. Students want to know that they're doing well. Students want to know that they're noticed academically and behaviorally that they're amazing. And so just some things that we've done at our school to highlight that this year. We brought in NFL player Tony Dunn to come and share with them what tomorrow looks like, should they want to go after their goals and achieve them. We've done, down here is a salsa challenge, and there's some great photos that go with this, but we do what's called a 200 board. And students who show exceptional social skills and positive behavior achieve in our school what's called a pop hat. And a pop hat's a rarity. They're not thrown out like candy. Fifteen of them exist today, and we call for those pop hats in, and from those pop hats we create a 200 board. And from that 200 board, you could be one of 10 students that wins a particular experience. And for this particular day, it was a salsa challenge where they tried to burn my face off with salsa, and they won. Apparently I just, it was sweaty and hot, it was terrible. But they loved it, and they loved seeing me struggle through that salsa challenge, and it meant a great deal to them. And down here, we reward perfect attendance. It's one of those things that falls under this gargantous umbrella of positive behavior supports, which is rewarding students for being at school every day and on time. So there's just a few highlights of what we do at Ann K. Hyman with PBIS. Thank you.
You want to talk about staff?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Staff recognition, and that goes for everyone, from our teachers to myself in the office. These are examples of how staff recognize me this year. Students have dog tags in their lanyard, we wear our own lanyards, and we recognize each other, and so I wear mine proudly as a reminder of how I'm being recognized. We recognize our kitchen staff, our custodial staff, our teachers, our volunteers. Let them know that we notice every effort and every effort that goes forward to make students excited about school.
Okay, and I'm going to talk just a little bit about PBIS at Brentwood and let you enjoy the picture as well I talk a little bit. So I've had the pleasure of working with PBIS at both the high school and middle school levels, and currently at Brentwood Middle School, one of our strongest teams is our PBIS team, which we appropriately call our Bengal Pride Team. And the overall vision of this group is to create that welcoming and nurturing climate that values academics and student involvement. At Brentwood, we teach our students our school-wide behavioral expectations, and we call it our claw behavior, which is to come prepared, listen and learn, act respectfully, and work hard. Every staff member is expected to use this language and teach the appropriate behaviors that fall under each one of those areas, and we tie the well-managed classroom strategies to our claw behavior, which is another way we support what we expect from our students. In order to support our expected behaviors, we have a rather extensive system for recognizing our students. They can earn Bengal bucks, which they can use at the school store. Compliments are, it's a complicated word to say, compliments, are just a little form a teacher writes up and actually gives a copy to the student, and that goes into a drawing for Bengal floats. And many of our students receive a personalized postcard at home thanking them for their commitment to following the Bengal Way. And alongside recognizing positive behaviors, especially at the middle school level, we know how important it is to teach what we expect, and we have a variety of interventions and consequences in place, and we look more towards intervention than consequence, because I know that just because I get a speeding ticket doesn't mean that I change my driving habits, but maybe if I connected it to something deeper, it would. And so that's what we try to do. First and foremost, it starts with our staff understanding our students and going above and beyond and building those positive relationships with each one of their kids from day one. And then using the well-managed classroom model, our teachers learn the behavior management practices, techniques on building relationships, and specific social skill instruction. However, just teaching inappropriate behavior does not ensure that all of our students are going to follow it in every single social situation, and so we use our data to help drive what we do in PBIS. And so we look at the behavioral infractions, as Amy was saying, and we predict our student behaviors. We are able to identify and target those locations. For example, the cafeteria is a place where we review our behavioral norms and expectations, and it's not often, but about monthly, we have to go back and remind kids of the procedures because they need that reinforcement, and at the same time, we need to hold them accountable to the expectations that we have. At the student level, what we do is we notice when a child has two or more behavioral referrals, and then we begin to look at that student and their motivations for behavior. And so we solicit input from the student, from staff members, from families, and we create a plan. We have students who have point sheets where the teachers help them to monitor their behavior in class, and that's been really successful for us. We have some kids just need to check in with an adult in the mornings and check out in the afternoons, which has been successful for others, and certain students need a completely different plan, and that's where PBIS helps us to really problem-solve and brainstorm alongside our star team. One of the most important elements that we've really been working with is the idea of restorative approaches. And sometimes there's a situation when a student's behavior gets to a point where it's interfering with the learning of others, so they are removed from class. And so the important part of that exclusionary practice is repairing the relationship with the student, because when a student is sent out of class, they realize, or they get the feeling, oh, well, the teacher doesn't want me anymore. And that's whether they're in sixth grade or seniors in high school. So getting that student with that teacher to understand what happened in that situation, what could have been done differently, how can we repair the harm that's been done, and most importantly, fix that relationship, is so important. As we grow up Brentwood, we plan to embed more of those restorative approaches between like the peer conflicts. And so overall, for us, PBIS isn't just a program or a system, but it really is a state of mind, and it's a feeling. And we know we can't have students learning in a chaotic and unsafe environment, and PBIS helps us have those structures and systems that we need to make sure we can get to high academic achievement. And there's one more slide for you. Yeah, Kayla Roush is one of our science teachers up there. We did a spirit assembly after our TCAT presentation, and that was called Chubby Chihuahua, where they had a contest to see which teacher could have the most jalapenos in their mouth, and she won. We had a Lulac Assembly, which we have a huge Lulac group where our kids just totally feel welcome in our school, and it's, all kids are part of that. We have some of our students who participated in Special Olympics, they're very excited to show their Bengal pride. And we do have our web leader program, and that is similar to the High School Link Crew Program, where it stands for Where Everyone Belongs, and the whole idea is transitioning those sixth graders and partnering them with eighth graders that make them feel safe from day one. So, there's some other stuff.
So in closing, PBIS supports all of us, supporting each other, has positive effects for our students, our staff, and our communities. So we would be happy to answer any questions that you have, and these guys will answer any questions that you have also.
Ms. Solis?
I just want to thank you for going outside the box and coming up with, you know, creative strategies to work with kids and, you know, always thinking up new ideas, and to take it to staff, I think, is even more important. I think when we show the example, it's a lot easier for our kids to recognize and do the same kind of behavior. So thank you for doing that.
Dr. Richard?
Would you just remind me of when we started using PBIS?
2004.
2004. This one we brought on. Yeah, and I agree. I so much appreciate the idea of, these are the outcomes that we want to see and that we focus on carrots rather than sticks, although we do carry a few sticks with our, you know, as needed. And just the variety of ways that it's implemented in each of the schools, really responding to the school population, but still the same outcomes, because we know we have a very mobile student group, and it's nice that they can move and the expectations are still the same.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Our next item on the agenda is a business finance item, is an information item, and it's a first read of policy DKA payroll information. I believe that Chief Financial Officer Megan Sponsor was supposed to present this, but I heard she's at-home crunching budget numbers right now, so Mr. Wayne will present.
That would be true. Good evening, Vice President Richardson, Dr. Lang, members of the board. It's been our practice when presenting modifications to existing board policies to bring it as an action item. However, when presenting brand-new policies, we typically bring it for a first read, accept comments or changes as needed from the board, and then bring it for action on the second read. Tonight, we're presenting for the first read a brand-new policy, DKA payroll information. If I'm running on, just stop me if you need to do anything else. This policy formalizes practices that have been in place for many years by requiring all employees to have direct deposit. At this time, nearly all employees do have direct deposit, with the exception of approximately 40 people, who for various reasons have not yet set up direct deposit. When we implemented Infinite Visions five years ago, we realized very significant operational budget savings by no longer printing check stubs and manual checks to that, to the extent we were, because employees now have access to these items online. The cost savings realized by working with these few remaining employees to set them up with direct deposit will save us about $5,000 annually. $5,000 is $5,000, so it's worth saving. It allows us to be more efficient with our limited resources. The second component of this policy is to state that payday will be the last business day of the month. This has always been the case for every month except December, where traditionally payday has been the last day of school for teachers. When we were doing paper checks, this made a lot more sense because they'd be leaving for the Christmas break. However, by requiring all employees to have direct deposit, this will no longer be necessary. Oftentimes, the stretch between that early payday in mid-December and the end of January, six weeks, is a pretty long time for employees to go without receiving a paycheck. This change is also necessary for cash flow purposes. We do not receive our funding from the state for the December transfer until December 24th. Therefore, we do not have cash on hand to make payroll until after that December funding transfer. In the past, we've been able to do this by structuring our investments to show maturity before that date. However, as our budget gets tighter and tighter, frankly, the flexibility we had to do that is simply disappearing. So those are the two components of this policy, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Dr. Richard?
Is there a policy that's any shorter than this one? Or is this now?
This could be a record. I'd have to search, but it's fairly short and to the point, a matter of two sentences, one long and one short.
Ms. Solis?
Any questions or concerns that have been raised?
Any questions or concerns that have been brought up to you from other people, meaning employees?
No, we have talked to our classified council and other employee groups. We are contacting those remaining few individuals directly and offering to assist them in getting set up with direct deposit. So, I don't anticipate a lot of issues with this one, so.
Thank you very much. Our next item is additional under business finance. It is an action item, Data Management, Inc., Time Clock Plus for $58,512.18, and I would ask for motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Well County School District Six approve the purchase of Time Clock Plus for a time clock system through Data Management, Inc., not to exceed $58,512.18 as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
This expenditure is planned from the current fiscal year. When we selected the Time Clock Plus system earlier this year, we selected it because it operates seamlessly and integrates with Infinite Visions, which is our current payroll and financial package. While most employees will be able to clock in at their computer, there are some places where there's a large number of employees that need to check in very quickly. So, this particular purchase order adds some wall-mounted proxy chip readers. An example would be transportation, where you might have 80, 90 employees that need to check in in the space of 15 minutes. We'd have to have a whole bank of computer terminals for them to type in, log in, and check in. So, these devices are mounted on the wall, and they allow you to flash your ID card, pass it, and the proxy chip reads that, communicates with our payroll system, and says this employee is clocked in for the day, or for this particular shift. So, that's what this additional $20,000 is for. That does take the original PO over $50,000, which is why we brought it to you for approval. Be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Question from the board? Roll call vote, Ms. Barea?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lidiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
And the motion carries, six-zero.
Thank you very much. Our next item is an action item, Dell Marketing LP, Microsoft licenses for Scott Elementary Computer Purchase, Dell Ecologic for $212,554.85. I would request a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Well County School District Six approve the purchase with Dell Marketing LP for $1,726 Microsoft Enrollment of Education Licenses not to exceed $79,509.05. Scott Elementary School Computer Purchase not to exceed $85,163.41. And Dell Ecologic for the OIT Storage Area Network Platform not to exceed $47,882.40 for a total amount of $212,554.86 as presented.
We have presentation by Chief Operations Officer Wayne Neads and Director of Technology Geronimo Berg.
Good evening again, Vice President Richardson, Dr. Lang, members of the board. Since the total purchase for these items has already been read, I won't repeat it. These are planned from the current year's budget. The largest two components of this purchase were awarded based on low bid. The third was a sole source based on compatibility with our existing SAN or Storage Area Network. The first item of $79,509.05 for Microsoft Enrollment Licenses is the annual license that covers our usage for all district computer systems, our usage of Windows and Office. The second item, $85,163.41, is to provision new computers, laptops, netbooks, et cetera, for Scott Elementary. The third item is a planned expansion of our current Storage Area Network. This is our district-wide storage data system, and it's time to expand it with some additional capacity. We had to sole-source this in order to be compatible with our existing system as we want them to communicate. I'll ask Mr. Ronenberg if he has anything he'd like to add to that.
You got it 100 percent.
We practiced this in advance.
Any discussion? Ms. Barea, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lidiak?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. R, excuse me, Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
And the motion carries, six-zero.
Thank you very much. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.